Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to see everyone here. Please excuse a little bit of a tardy delay this afternoon. There's a lot going on. So, viva fiesta, right? Is that time? Is this working, Leonard? Or can you hear me okay? Okay. Perfect. So, good afternoon and welcome. It's another wonderful day here on our campus and we have taken a lot of time since the last encounter in which we were all together to really explore our opportunity to set our strategic vision as we move forward as a university. You will see before you today an afternoon filled of activities in which we're going to do some sharing, some joint conversation, some sharing again, and an opportunity to try and bring everyone into the great mix of ideas that have been floated through the Strategic Planning Committee. So, I'm going to take just a minute to ask our Strategic Planning Committee members to please stand. As you can see, we have a broad group of individuals from across the university community. The reason I asked them to stand is I wanted you to get a sense of the diversity of areas, position types, and departments that are represented and have been reflected in the work that has taken place over the last month, six weeks or so. Today is a big moment for us to engage and reflect on where we're going. And to that matter, we've invited some of our friends at the University Foundation who are here. May I ask our Foundation Board members to please stand. We have four of our Board members. Thank you. We have four of our Board members joining us today in part so that we get also a broader perspective, so we're not just talking to ourselves. Now, when we were at the last Strategic Town Hall meeting, by that time, we had done a full day of focus groups and we did another half a day of focus groups. So, part of what you're going to experience today is an attempt to also integrate all of the feedback we heard from a wide swath of individuals around the city of San Antonio. So, this is an external look as well with a full 360 assessment of what others outside the university had to share with us about how they saw the university and their vision for us moving forward in very audacious manner. So, we have a very tight timeline and I know we're starting just a few minutes late. I'm going to take a moment or two to introduce Dr. John Welty and Dr. Jolene Kester, who are the consultants that are engaged on this assignment, who have been working very closely with our very esteemed chairs, Dr. Leonard Love and Dr. Holly Verhassel. They have done an amazing job particularly in not only helping us to stay on task but be focused on the big vision and then when we need to, to narrow in on the micro vision and then come back out to the bigger perspective. We committed earlier today amongst the Strategic Planning Committee not to have our feelings hurt if you didn't like the work that we presented before you. Of course, we're hoping you will. But, we're also very much looking for and seeking an open and honest dialogue and a reflection of what we have spent some time on and make sure that it actually reflects what you as a university community think is important for our future. So, I'm going to invite John Welty to come up to the center stage here and start walking us through the planning process and an overview of today's tasks before turning it over to the chairs. Dr. Welty? Oh, it's up to Leonard now. Excuse me, I missed the change. Dr. Love?
Yes.
Dr. Verhassel. I'll turn the floor over to you both. Thank you very much.
Okay. We thought we would first start with some of the reasons why we're doing this. And sort of the quote here that I use in my strategy class with my students, from Paul Bryant, better known as Bear Bryant at Alabama. And as a bit of trivia, before going to Alabama, he was at A&amp;M College Station and the only student, the only player that received a Heisman Trophy while under Bear Bryant, on one of Bear Bryant's teams, was at College Station. But, he said, "It's not the will to win that matters. Everyone has that. It's the will to prepare to win that matters." And that's what we're trying to do in this process. And I want to emphasize, it's very much a work in process. Everything you see today is a draft. And we expect to have many drafts as we go through this. The goal of what we intend to do is to facilitate a process that builds from areas of strength, promise, and opportunity to create a strategic plan to guide the future in San Antonio for the next five years and beyond. So, we've done a lot of research and that's going to be reflected in the things that we've presented today. A lot of data from faculty, from the staff, from the students, from our outside stakeholders.
They won't keep them, of course.
Okay. I'm sorry. I talk a lot. I assume that I'm being covered. Okay. Let me just use that then. Anyway, there's an article that you'll see. It's the second page in the handouts on the table that we wanted to provide to everyone about why strategic planning matters. And it summarizes the potential impact from three interrelated disruptors in higher education today. And the first is demographic. And although in Texas and in San Antonio in particular, demographics are favorable for higher education, it's not one of those things where it's a smooth upward trajectory. It's one of those things where it has dips along the way. And it's important for us to recognize those and prepare for those as we lay out plans to continue to grow as a university. The second is economic. Today, there's much more emphasis on the value in higher education. And it's much, we're expected to demonstrate that value. And finally, cultural. There's a change in how universities are being seen among important stakeholders such as the state legislature. And we need to make sure that we reflect those things. So, again, the members of the Strategic Planning Committee, you saw them stand up, but to introduce each of them, Dr. Balasurabramanya.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Dr. Franson, I don't think he's here.
Dr. Galen.
Allison Garcia. Amy Lewis. Let me just use those instead of... Melissa Mahan. Mary Mayorga. I know she's here. I saw her, I thought. Okay. Daryl Morrison.
Elizabeth Murakami.
Okay. Elizabeth Murakami. Non Palmero. I saw him. Karina Ross. Laura Sanchez. And Curtis Spears. So, again, it's very much a cross-section of the university. And out of that group, we also had a research subcommittee that includes some members of the Strategic Planning Committee and some others, who went through a great volume of data, trying to summarize that and integrate it into what we're doing. And that group included Eric Cooper, Amy Lewis, myself, Jan Mims, and Holly Verhassel. And with that, we'll turn it over to Dr. Welty.
I want to just quickly review with you the process that we're following and going through. Those of you that were here at the first Town Hall meeting recall that you saw this. But essentially, what we're, we've gone through the steps now to prepare. Our first Town Hall meeting, which was really the introduction to the whole process, as Leonard has mentioned, we've been doing, or the subcommittee's doing, a lot of research. And they've been working on drafting statements of vision, core values, mission, and goals that you're going to see in just a few minutes. Actually, they're on the table before you. And then, following today, we will move to the phase of actually having groups begin to develop desired outcomes. That'll be followed by time devoted to preparing the strategies for the goals that are identified. And then, we move to the implementation phase, which will occur early next fall and actually complete the plan in October. So, to go through a little bit more, whoops, going the wrong way here. What's happening to me here? There we go. Okay. As is mentioned, we went through a variety of documents about A&amp;M, the surrounding community. Those were all compiled and we worked with that data that we gathered last time we were here. There's a very important site that Holly's going to share with you that where you can keep up with all of the data that's being developed and where you can access everything that the committee has been doing over the years.
Yeah. So, all of the documents in those binders were compiled by individuals here on campus. And they are all stored electronically on the university's Intranet site. So, anyone with a university login has access to these materials. Once you've accessed the Intranet, you will go to committee site and then down to strategic And then, you can see that we have plan materials here, but under documents, we have strategic plan documents related to the individual meetings. And then, we also have the reference documents. So, anything that was provided to Dr. Kester and Dr. Welty and to members of the Strategic Planning Committee is available to the entire university community, if you are so inclined.
As we, just to quickly review, when we were here, the last time we met with a number of advisory boards, the Foundation Board, chamber presidents, number of leaders in the community, leadership from Alamo Colleges, local school districts, and also a number of campus community members, faculty, staff, and students. That data that we gathered at that time, we put together, summarized for the committee and provide that back to them. That is available on the site that Holly just mentioned. Work has been done now to review all of that data, complete a SWOT analysis, and then the research committee has gone through the process of identifying areas of greatest strengths and promise, greatest opportunities and needs for the campus, also looking at major driving forces that affect you and planning assumptions. And you're going to see those, actually, some of that material is on the table before you, and we'll do a quick overview of those in just a minute. We have taken, and actually, the committee has taken, all of that information and developed a draft of core values, vision, mission, and strategic priorities. And that's really the subject of what we need your feedback and help on today. Just a quick review on the very, very basic elements of a strategic plan. First of all, core values, that you're going to hear about in just a minute. What are your fundamental beliefs as a university community? And then, moving from that to developing a vision statement, very simply, look into a crystal ball and what is our dreams or our ideal future? And you'll have that described based upon what the committee's been able to do to date. And then, the mission statement, which really seeks to answer the questions. Who are we? What do we do? Whom do we serve? And then, most importantly, how are we different from other universities in Texas and across the country? Moving from there then, is to look at the question of what do we have to do to achieve our mission and move forward? And those are the goal statements that you're going to hear about today, the initial draft statements. Once we've gotten through those, we will then be asking groups to go to work on answering the question, how do we know we've gotten there in the next year, two years, five years? And those will be the desired outcomes, fairly specific, quantifiable statements that will be developed that you can measure whether or not you're making that progress. And then, following those desired outcomes, as we move into the summer months and early next fall, answering the question of what are we going to do to achieve our desired outcomes or strategies? And we'll be bringing back, actually, the groups will be bringing those back to you for your feedback. Once that's occurred, we then really move to developing the actual strategic plan. And then, October, we go to implementation, which will ask the leadership of the campus to actually figure out how they're, what's going to be the most important thing to do in year one. Then, we'll ask the question of how are you going to pay for it and begin to prioritize so that as you move forward, you begin to make progress. So, today, we're at the second forum. And then, we're going to, after we have a quick presentation on the work of the committee, we're going to ask you to go to work and provide some feedback to the committee so that they can actually take that feedback and then begin moving to final recommendations to the president on values, mission, vision, and goals. So, who's coming up? Leonard or Holly?
No.
The Leonard and Holly Show.
Thank you. So, in terms of our next step, what we're going to do today is present the committee's drafts of our core values, our mission, our vision, and the strategic priorities. And these are for your feedback. In terms of the development of these items, I think the Strategic Planning Committee has met weekly for anywhere from about one to three hours over the past six weeks. And then, we've wordsmithed outside of our meetings, you know, using Google Docs and some other technologies, to come up with the revision or the documents that you're going to see today. But it is very much a work in progress and we've probably done some parts of them very well. We may have missed a few things and so that's the opportunity you have today, is to tell us where we've done well and where we need to consider making changes to these documents. Once we have those documents finished, or more refined than they are today, then we will be creating a series of cross-divisional working groups for each strategic priority. And our goal is to have four strategic priorities and there will be a working group associated with each one of those. And then, that will drive the next step of the process, as Dr. Welty said, which is to start thinking about how we will make all of this happen. Okay? In step five, then, we'll create our desired outcomes. And these task forces will create these outcomes within each of the strategic priorities. And the outcomes will be published online and the university community will be able to provide feedback via the website. So, we're not planning a third Town Hall at this point, but all of the work that the committee does will be available for review and for feedback in just a few more weeks. So, our core values, and the print here is a little small, but you do have printed copies at your table. It starts with core values right on the top. And so, our first core value is A&amp;M San Antonio Excellence. So, "We strive for excellence above all else. All members of the faculty, staff, students, and alumni represent the A&amp;M San Antonio family with the highest standards of integrity and characterize the grit, honor, and traditions of the campus community." Our second core value is being audacious. "We think big and work tirelessly to fulfill those aspirations. We are an agile, innovative, and entrepreneurial university that prepares students to create a better future and transform the world, starting with our local community, region, and state." Our third value was opportunity. "We create opportunities for a diverse student body, traditional and non-traditional, including embracing the Hispanic and military family communities. We are inclusive of all learners and welcome students where they are, socially, economically, and academically. We prepare students with marketable skills that contribute to a meaningful life and fulfilling career." "We are student-focused. We integrate curricular, co-curricular, experiential learning, student services, and technologies as catalysts to achieve student learning. We use intentional and innovative teaching and learning methodologies to educate a diverse student body, enhance retention, and its timely graduation." And the final core value is that we are collaborative. "We value interdisciplinary approaches and partnerships that respond to needs across industries, the military community, school districts, the Alamo Colleges, and other universities, and the Texas A&amp;M University system." When we first worked on these as a committee, we took all of the feedback that was collected during the March round of meetings. We had big sticky notes, we had the whiteboards, and we covered 219 downstairs with all of these words. As a committee, we voted and started to refine these lists, because we couldn't put all, I think we started with 40 words.
Yes.
As our core values and decided which ones truly represented our values, the things that are central to who we are, which things we needed to include in the mission statement and which things needed to be included in our vision. And so, we kept kind of moving these things back and forth and we felt that these five things best represented who we are.
No, no. I, if you want to, okay. From that then, we developed the vision for the university. Again, this is a draft, but A&amp;M San Antonio will become an urban polytechnic university that employs students, especially those from historically underrepresented communities we serve. A&amp;M San Antonio, as an economic and social catalyst, will become nationally recognized for student and academic success. And one of the things that a vision should do is should be something that inspires the members of the university as well as those outside the university. It tells who we are and what we're doing and should be something that guides the other activities of the university. And then, our mission. A mission's a little longer. The mission gets into answering specific questions. Who we are? What do we do? For whom do we do those things? And most importantly, how are we different? From a strategic perspective, there has to be some reason for them to choose you rather than one of the other universities. And so, we have to say, this is how we're different and that's important and that's why you should choose us. So, our mission draft at this point, "A&amp;M San Antonio is a diverse, heritage-rich, polytechnic university reflective of the rapidly growing region and community it serves. Faculty and staff collaborate to create challenging, industry-responsive academic programs that embed experiential learning and achieve a transformative university experience for all students. The university's inclusive environment embraces learning and social development. The university purposefully pursues partnerships that boost readiness for college-level success and career preparedness." And it goes on, "A strong foundation for student and academic success is established through interdisciplinary teaching and applied learning using relevant education, scholarship, research, and public service to inspire lifelong learning and responsible global citizenship. A&amp;M San Antonio graduates are academically and culturally prepared with marketable skills and competencies that equip them for graduate school or rewarding careers."
The word that may be new in all of those, some of you may even recognize some common themes from our existing mission statement, is this idea of being a polytechnic university. And within the committee, there were some that were more familiar with the term and some that were less familiar with the term. And when you say polytechnic, you know, you may not have heard it at all or it may bring some images to mind. But in the last probably five to 10 years, polytechnic has taken on a more broader definition. It's not just the picture of an engineering or program that you may think of. We found this quote from U.S. News &amp; World Reports. They say, "In the new polytechnic, universities must collaborate more effectively with businesses and governments to link the capabilities of advanced information technologies, communications, and networking to the life sciences and the physical, materials, environmental, social, cognitive, and computational sciences." So, this idea of a broad base or a broad approach to polytechnic with the focus on application and interdisciplinary needs is something that really resonated with some of the groups on campus as well as some of the community-focused groups. So, this is something that emerged again and again in the meetings that took place in March. In terms of looking at how this is applied, Arizona State University has created a polytechnic campus. And if you look at this definition or their description, "ASU polytechnic campus is a nexus for studies in interdisciplinary sciences, engineering, management, technology, and education. Industry partnerships are key to the campus distinctive course offerings, which provide opportunities for project-based learning within advanced laboratory spaces." And then, it goes on to talk about their specialized equipment and their specialized services with respect to their own academic programs. But some of the things here, the idea of industry partnerships, programs in interdisciplinary sciences, management, education, touch very much on the academic programs we have here as well. And this idea of project-based learning, that it's more than just what goes on in the classroom. So, we took this and sort of thought about, you know, what does that mean for A&amp;M San Antonio? And so, in terms of thinking about us being polytechnic, we actually, this comes from the Greek word meaning many arts. So, it's not a technical term in the way we think of technical. And it opens up doors for opportunities for multidisciplinary experiential learning and civic engagement. We think this term reflects the development of marketable skills, which is something that's important to us but is also a state priority. And this idea of creating industry and community partnerships, so that it's a very broad-based term that covers a lot of what we're hoping to accomplish with our comprehensive expansion. One of the reasons that I think polytechnic came up is it's also a way for us to set ourselves apart from other universities in the state, that we would be the first one using this term and we can define and identify with it based on what our direction is.
Yeah. In terms of that, it's an opportunity for us to brand ourselves. And that's one of the key things that we need to do. In some ways, am I, am I coming through? In some ways, we are, okay, in some ways, we don't have an image yet. And that's a good thing, because we can define it the way we want to define it. But this is something that can help brand us. Polytechnic means interdisciplinary in terms of the way we intend to use it. It means applied. It means experiential learning. But in terms of interdisciplinary, a lot of schools talk about being interdisciplinary, but we actually do it here. And I think it's important for that to be recognized. I have research projects with faculty in other areas at this university. At other universities, those sorts of things don't happen. You do research only in your discipline. You don't work with people from other areas. We do that here. And so, when we talk about this, what we mean is that it's a more all-encompassing term. Moving forward, deciding what we need to do to be prepared for the future. Again, a quote I use with my students in class. Wayne Gretzky said, "A good hockey player plays where the puck is, but a great player plays where the puck is going to be." And so, what we're trying to do is look into a crystal ball and see if we can determine what the future holds and how can we be prepared to take advantage of the opportunities in the future, to position ourselves. So, being a strategy person, I actually thought in terms of doing this as a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And this really is distilling down a thousand or more pages of documents, a variety of interviews, a feedback from the faculty and staff and students at previous Town Halls, et cetera. So, starting with strengths. We're a strategic urban university. Our location's within 200 miles of Houston, Austin, and much of the Rio Grande Valley. The A&amp;M system and brand, this is something very important that we can build on. I, from my own experience, had represented another university in Texas on student projects in Asia. And when they would find, on more than one occasion, when they would find out that we were from Texas, they would, the first question would be, "A&amp;M." It's very well-known. And so, we can use that brand- It's very well-known, and so we can use that brand to our advantage. New building infrastructure, it needs all codes. We don't have to try to retrofit to make things work. Except for Brooks, new information technology infrastructure. Those are from Brooks, we'll definitely get that part. We're eligible for Hispanic Serving Institutions designation in 2018. We don't have any legacy systems, we can build those for ourselves. Our partnership with the Alamo College System, and our campus is approximately 700 acres. We have a lot of room out there and a lot of potential. That's a very attractive location. And then our faculty and staff experience.
The second part of our analysis was the weaknesses. So in terms of weaknesses, like so many institutions, we face resource constraints with respect to financial resources, facilities, not facilities that are anyway bad facilities, but that, you know, we have a very limited number of buildings here on campus, and that building additional facilities will take time, you know, to continue to grow out our space. And at this point in time, there are limited services surrounding our campus, so... We also, in our meetings, talked about limits of public transportation for students who commute to campus. You know, it can be a very quick trip, or depending on the part of town you're coming from, can take significantly longer. We also talk about weaknesses in terms of infrastructure. What's next? Okay. And student housing, so these are things that we don't have yet. The need to create a strong brand. We right now don't have a very strong identity, but we're new, and part of what we're doing now will help us to create that brand. We had concerns in terms of our student population maybe being less prepared for college than the average college student, and that would include their preparedness to use technology. And then, right now, we have little focus on international or global activities.
Okay. In terms of opportunities, the Texas Higher Education Strategic Plan goal is that by 2030, 60% of all Texans in the age range 25 to 34 will have either a certificate or a degree. Next, the regional area of governments, the Alamo Council of Governments, has an emphasis on creating a workforce with marketable skills, as does the state. And this comes to a variety of state documents referring to higher education, as well as the feedback that we receive from our corporate associates in terms of external stakeholders. The particular areas in San Antonio that they want to focus on are aerospace and aviation, bio-science and healthcare, energy, financial services, information technologies and cybersecurity, manufacturing, and military and defense. And then we also, being in San Antonio, tourism and hospitality is another area for us. Our co-ops, having our students gain valuable work experience while they complete their education, because those things need to go hand-in-hand. Using technology to become an institution of excellence. We can use technology, among other things, to improve our instructional capabilities, predictive analytics to help our students be more successful in completing their education and to expand our geographic reach. Forming partnerships with Chamber of Commerce, with businesses, with the federal government, the state government, Alamo Community Colleges and the local high schools. Demographics, again, the trends for Texas and San Antonio are good overall. There's a lot of potential growth, a lot of, a very high birth rate, those things, and a lot of people moving to Texas, all of which works to our advantage. Opportunity to transform the South Side both economically and in terms of the quality of life. Fundraising, the ability to recruit outstanding faculty.
And then the final section of our SWOT analysis are the threats, so things in our external environment. And the first one is competition. As we grow, we will have to be very intentional about how we recruit and reach out to students because even though Texas's high school population is increasing, there will be competition within our market and competition from surrounding states.
It's important to recognize that there was a lot of growth that we received as a university simply because we opened and where we are. But we probably are approaching the limits of what we can expect there. Moving forward to continue to grow as a university, we're going to have to be able to compete with all of the other universities in the area, universities that have a online program from other locations, the for-profit universities. So we can't just take it for granted that students will come here simply because we're here and we build buildings and provide facilities. We have to establish some reason why they want to choose us, and that's very important. And we have to provide some reason why our external stakeholders want to support us and why the state legislature should continue to support us. Those things can't be taken as givens anymore.
The second threat that we identified was rising levels of student debt. There's approximately $1.2 trillion in outstanding student loans in 2015, which is a concern given that we don't want participating in higher ed to sort of become an obstacle to student success after graduation. Controlling student debt is also a goal of the Coordinating Board Strategic Plan. By 2030, they have set as a goal statewide that student debt at graduation will not exceed 60% of first-year wages within that field, so that students will not come out with loans that they cannot pay back. Another threat, the increased emphasis on demonstrating quality, and that can be things like completion rates, time to degree, use of competency-based programs, high-impact practices, and predictive analytics. We are increasingly required to report on the success of our programs and our students. An increased emphasis on demonstrating impact and value, specifically, again, that phrase, "marketable skills." For the state, we are going to have to demonstrate that all of our programs produce graduates who have those marketable skills. Another threat is the financial squeeze. There is the pressure to not raise tuition and fees, and at the same time, from the state, we are getting less and less financial support. Since 1990, public financial support of colleges and universities has dropped from an average of 40% of the operating revenues to under 20%. Leonard likes to say that universities, I'm sorry, did I steal your quote?
Oh, that's okay. But increasingly, states are referring to public universities as state-assisted rather than state-supported, and that's an important distinction. But as a former dean of mine once quipped, "We've gone from being state-supported to state-assisted on our way to being state-located." But increasingly, they're going to expect us to pay our own way.
And then finally, the increased student demand or even the need for flexibility and delivery, and how do we balance that with our goal for student engagement and high-impact practices? Nope, there was one more. And then finally, the need to grow endowments for scholarships and other initiatives. So as a new university, we don't have the endowment that a lot of more established institutions do, and that could give us some flexibility down the road.
We're going to turn this back over to John and Jolene for the next part of this. We are recording what is being presented here today, but when you work in the groups, I do want to emphasize at that point, it's not recorded. We very much want to encourage everyone to give us their honest feedback, your honest views on what you see here, any changes you might like to see, et cetera. And again, that's something that we hope you will be very frank with us.
We appreciate the fact that you invited us back during this great festival so that we can wear these colorful medallions, which we're trying to do. All right. So the challenge to the university, and the challenge then given to the Strategic Planning Committee, is given the strengths, given the weaknesses, given the threats, and given the opportunities, what must Texas A&amp;M San Antonio do in the next five years in order to be sure that you achieve your mission? Two comments before I present to you the strategic priorities that the committee has narrowed in and focused on. The first is the consultants remind the committee that you cannot do everything, that you, in order to have a strategic plan, you have to have some things that are more important than others. The reminder to all of you is that a strategic plan is also not an operational plan. It doesn't identify everything that the university will do. Final comment before we show these strategic priorities to you as well is that there is oftentimes, in a good strategic plan, overlap, interlacing between and among the priorities and the actions, the strategies that take place. And you'll see more of that as the plan is more fully fleshed out and amplified as the various task forces begin to work on it. The first priority, to become a national model of student and academic success. You've been working on that already. It was loud and clear in terms of the conversations we had with folks here in March, but also, it is loud and clear in terms of the SWOT analysis, in terms of the strengths and weaknesses of the institution, and the threats and opportunities. Second, is to develop and implement an academic plan that specifies the academic programs to be developed over the next 10 years. Again, right now, you have a set of programs, there's some planning about additional programs, but this part of the planning framework for the institution moving forward is critical from the perspective of not only the consultants but the Strategic Planning Committee. Third, accelerate enrollment growth by effectively implementing learner-centered academic and co-curricular programs. And you can see, as you look at three and one, an example of how synergy between those two priority areas is likely to occur. And the fourth, engage in partnerships that advance student academic success and job readiness, as well as provide opportunities to enhance faculty and staff engagement, scholarship, and research. These priority areas will be reshaped to be stated as goals. And essentially, the proposal from the Strategic Planning Committee is that these four priority areas become the four primary goal areas for A&amp;M San Antonio's strategic plan for the five years starting in the fall of 2016. Now, to the critical part of this work here today, which is to seek your active participation and feedback on these ideas, mission, vision, values, and strategic priorities from the Strategic Planning Committee. So this is the time in the workshop when I want to ask for your careful attention because we're going to quickly move to chaos if you don't keep tracking with me. So the first thing I want to have happen is if there is a table with one or two persons at it, can I ask you please to join another table? So there's a person down there, and there's two people over there. You want to just join here, and you can, sir, you can join over there. Great. All right. That was done with a relatively small amount of chaos, but now, you have, the next thing you should each do at your table is appoint a scribe, someone who can write clearly so someone else might be able to read it. All right. Does every table have a scribe? Does every table have a scribe? Okay. All right. Now, if I could ask you, please, to stop the conversation, could you stop the table conversation so that I can give you the rest of the instruction? Thank you. I said, you know, this is like chaos, so I, you know, getting my Attila the Hun hat on and trying to manage, right? Because there is, there are a lot of ideas for you to talk about. If you look at the sheet, what I'm going to do is I'm going to assign one of the priorities to each of the tables. So your table will talk about core values, vision, and mission, but you will only discuss one of the strategic priorities. So question number one says, are there any ideas or concepts that are not clear? You should all talk about the core values in response to that question. All of the tables will talk about vision in response to that question. All of the tables will talk about mission with respect to that question. But each table will be given only one priority to discuss. So you have about 15 minutes to spend on question one, about 15 minutes to spend on question two, and about 10 minutes to spend on question three. We'll be monitoring the time, and shout out over the microphone as you meet those time milestones. I'm going to walk around to each of the tables and assign a priority to each table. So that particular part of the instructions will happen in a directed way at each table. Were my instructions clear? Is there any ambiguity? Well, that's good. I'm sure there must be, but thank you for indulging me. All right. So go to it. I'm going to walk around and assign the priorities for each of your tables.
We wanted to take just a few minutes to hear from you in terms of part of the work that you've done. What Jolene failed to tell you is whoever was selected as a scribe is also going to be the person that reports out. So what I would like to do, those of you that were the scribes and are going to report, make sure that we get your paper because we will put that all together and put it on the web provided to the committee. But I just wanted to take a sampling of what everyone has said, and so I'm going to ask four tables just to share with everyone your reaction to the proposed value statements. So let's hear it from the scribe over here, just your reaction to the values. So let's hear it from the scribe over here, just your reaction to the values. Core values.
On the core values, we said that need to be inclusive of all communities, not community. So that word kind of bothered us. When it says academically in that second sentence, we wondered if you were talking about only admitting students with certain admissions standards. Do reconsider the word grit in the core values.
Okay. Let's, next table, right here, let's hear what you had to say about core values.
Okay. Core values. We agreed about the, okay, we agreed, talking about on the core values, that the verbiage related to the Hispanic and military family communities is a little bit too limiting in terms of the scope. We actually recommended that in that particular value, that only the first and the third sentence be kept. We talked about in audacious that we think big and we work diligently versus the word tirelessly. On student-focused, we felt that that was a good core value in terms of the verbiage proposed. And then finally, on collaborative, we wanted to shorten the sentence so that it read just we value interdisciplinary approaches and partnerships that respond to needs of our community. End of sentence. We felt that the list there created an opportunity for there to be thought of as an exclusive orientation toward these entities as opposed to a global focus.
And then in the operation part, that small college was a little too specific, that we were broad on everything else, military, school district, maybe it should just read other institutions, including words like engagement, to make it feel like the students were a partner in this and not just talking at them, but a partner in this whole process.
May I? Thanks. We agreed with a lot of the things from the other tables, but a couple of different, we call A&amp;M San Antonio, we actually rewrote that to say we, that respond to region, state, nation, and world. We thought that was a better way of putting it, and the list is just kind of too limiting. And those are the main things. Oh, also under audacious, we ended just deleting the first sentence completely.
Great. Let's move next, now report on, next four tables on vision.
So I think, let's see, vision. One of the things we thought about was the term we use for our university, urban polytechnic university, is that the appropriate framing? Because that's really the definition of what we are and how we are. And is that clear? Is that going to be our mission moving forward? Is that, are those the terms we want to use? See, what else did we have here for mission? I don't see my mission there. I think that's the main one. The main one we had, I was trying to find that. There we go. That's all we had, sorry.
Okay. Who's the scribe here?
I think our comments are somewhat similar. The word polytechnic seems to conjure visions of an engineering school, so it should be defined. Perhaps it refers to experiential learning, and that should be mentioned explicitly. Yeah, that's all we had on vision.
We also mentioned about contact and if the general public is really understanding the importance of contact, they still want to understand the meaning of this. Okay. We agreed with the polytech. We also recommended removing the word urban, replacing embrace with empowers students because it's a stronger message. And also, we had, we underrepresented instead of communities, population, and we added on to that, after population, we took some of the words from the mission statement, the culturally prepared with marketable skills and competencies that equip them for the future.
Great. Last table on vision.
So we had a lot of the same, we had a lot of the same thoughts in that polytechnic. Really, our consensus was that we'll have to define that either on the website or through communication so that everyone can understand what that means. On a personal note, we've all decided that we love the word urban polytechnic, and we all want to be that.
Okay. Let's go now to comments.
Okay. On our discussion about mission, the first thing that we hit on was the fact in the mission statement, you said that San Antonio, A&amp;M San Antonio is a diverse blah, 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 polytechnic university, and that's not aligned with your vision, which is saying we're going to become that type of university. So we wanted to see those align. That bothered us. That's all I can tell you is we went back and forth in that ambiguous. What else do we have? I think that was our main focus. We didn't get a little bit in that one.
Okay. So the big takeaway we took from the mission, it's not that things were really unclear, it's just that it seemed very long and kind of wordy. Not that that's a bad thing, just making a comment, but it does seem like that can get, you can get lost in translation when you're trying to come up, when you're trying to define your mission, sometimes too much is too much. So that was our comment.
With mission, have you reported on, has your table reported on anything? Yeah. So I want to go to tables that haven't reported. This table has reported. This table has reported.
We have not reported because a lot of the statements that have been mentioned, we have had similar discussions. I know it's about mission, but I'd like to go back to vision. And, you know, yeah, we need to, we need to define the attributes of nationally recognized. What are nationally recognized programs? What are their attributes? And then borrow some of that particular verbiage and inject it into our mission and all the
Okay. So for us, for our mission concern was about the polytechnic, about how are we going to be describing that to future students, who especially freshmen, who don't probably know that vocabulary, and the other older generation who knows it as a different term. So how are we going to change that over?
Okay. Now we'd like to hear from you on your comments on the priorities. Remember, each table has just been given one priority. So who had priority one? Raise table over here. You had priority one? No? No, who else had priority one? Okay. Let's hear from you.
Okay. Yeah. Alrighty. So, scribe left. I was taking care of time. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, pass.
Keep trying. Be ready.
Okay. We just talked about it being better defined. We thought it was a good priority, but we also thought maybe two, three, and four, it was like really the overarching, and everything else kind of seemed to be bullet points underneath it.
Okay. What other table had priority one? Oh, all right.
Sorry. Okay. You scared me there for a moment. Okay. So yes, we have priority one. So what we were looking at for our strategic analysis of it is to make sure that we have the available and innovative technology to make sure that the students were able to reach where we wanted them to go and their success, as well as to ensure that we had applicable safety nets or steps in order to catch the students that are kind of maybe not going to the tutoring sessions because they need help, but to have that amazing faculty in place that will be able to help and identify who those students are in order to get them the remedial courses or the tutoring that would have, be available at all times for the students, or at least within reason, in order to accommodate and reach our priority.
Okay. Let's hear, who had strategic priority two? Here you go.
I'm going to. Yeah. So this is the one on the academic plan. The top action items are clearly that we need to finish the strategic plan so that we can start working on the academic plan and then come up with a timeline to complete. I'd like to say something about vision and mission real quick as well. I've got the mic. The mission reads like the second paragraph is a revised version of the mission statement we have now, so I think you need to shorten that to one paragraph. It's too long and it's a little all over the place. The vision, we need an elevator speech version definition of polytechnic. I don't think it's a bad term at all, and as somebody from the humanities, I'm not threatened by it in the slightest, but we need an elevator speech definition of it. And, oh yes, and Lori is very concerned about the use of the word boost. She thinks it should be foster or nurture or something like that.
Who's next on priority two? We were concerned about making sure that whatever academic plan is developed, that there's also an evaluation for each one of those particular deliveries, because many times we just forget, and it's possible that the committees have already thought about that, but it's real important that, all right, so how are we going to measure it? How are we going to measure our success so that we can make the choices?
So we had some of the same. We thought it was clear. We agree that 10-year is the right timeframe. However, we probably need an evaluation for retiring programs that don't fit, because in a 10-year plan, you may get three, four years into it, and the priorities change, or, you know, change is coming, and I think to be agile, we have to be able to retire programs when we need to.
Who else had two that hasn't reported? All right. Priority three. Here we go.
So for priority three, we had a couple of things. One was the co-curricular programs. If we're going to make this part of our retention, we need to really have significant improvements in that and what that means and how we market that, and also just how the campus is perceived, how friendly we are, what our reputation is. When students come to visit, are they going away with a good impression compared to how other campuses are involved with them and how they're treating them? Part of that should be retention strategies, how to target more groups such as veterans, how to get that 60% debt ratio that was talked about in the presentation. We also briefly talked about goals. This is one of the ones that we might put some numbers to, saying exactly how many do we need over a particular period of time. I think that's mostly what we had. Okay. So our big takeaway for this third priority was that we felt that the word strategically was better used than the word effectively, because why would you effectively implement a program? Just a thought. And the other thing being, we kind of felt that we weren't sure why enrollment is, that enrollment growth is tied to the success necessarily, and we can elaborate on that more when we get to the next part, if we get to that part in time.
We agreed with you as well. We thought that it shouldn't just be about numbers, but it should also be about the student experience and about the student growth that they have within the university. Another thing that we wanted to add was that we need to create an academic plan or show that we're going to create something within there, because it just says implementing. It doesn't talk about creating anything. So we can't implement something if we don't have it.
Okay. What other table had three? Anyone that hasn't reported? All right.
Priority four was about engagement in partnerships. And I would like to preface by saying that this table consists of distinguished members from the business. These are foundation board members. They are with the government, so their perspective is that the university ought to establish links with corporations on experiential learning. One of the easy results would be mock interviews. Corporations, for example, would coach our students in how to interview for positions. And our partners should be corporations, the military, community colleges, local, and state governments.
Okay. We're also reporting on number four, and what we came up with was that we liked the fact that it was left at partnership, because that does allow you to understand that these are partnerships that are built within the university or exterior, you know, outside of the university. Either way, we kind of like the generalized verbiage of that. But also, we thought that as an action item, you would need to, there are a lot of resources. We've just recently hired the executive director for experiential learning. We've hired the, is it a VP for institutional advancement? As a community, as a university, we need to support those people, and collectively, everybody just in this room, not to mention the ones that aren't in this room, we all have contacts within San Antonio, within the state of Texas, whether it's family, business, previous employers, whatever, that we can harvest and kind of channel to these folks to help empower them to get this job done and to get this portion of it started off on a good foot. That's just what we had to start with. Anything else, guys? Okay. That's it.
Any other fours? Yes. Go.
Okay. So we really focused more on the fact that this particular priority, while it is oriented toward providing resources for faculty, staff, and students, seemed to be a lot to create in one single priority, and focused in a little bit more on distinguishing that there is a need for resources for both students and also for faculty and staff. So that was our first comment. And then, as we deliberated a little bit further, we thought, well, maybe what we might do is change the wording that it creates an equal parallel between resource need between students and faculty and staff. I think there was a discussion, and it may have been a little bit off point, but I think it was a valuable discussion about the recognition that to really work and do everything that we want to do with our vision and mission is that we need to make sure that our faculty and staff have adequate support. We did not necessarily focus in on engaging in partnerships on that portion of the statement, but I think the other two teams did a good job.
Okay. Anyone else? Priority four? I miss any table? Okay. Jolene is coming around for the scribe. She needs your work, and we will take that material that you developed and actually summarize that, provide that to the committee so they have it now really as a benefit. so they have it now really as a benefit of your comments. We'll also ask and give an opportunity for anyone in the university community before May 6 to comment on the values, vision, mission, and the priorities so that committee has that benefit. Once they've heard and collected all that, they'll begin moving toward a final recommendation to the president. So thank you very much for the time that you spent this afternoon, the feedback, I think from what the sample that I heard was very, very helpful. And before I give Holly the final word here, just mention that the next steps now, there'll be four task forces appointed, one for each of those goal areas that you worked on, and they're going to be asked to start working now on the desired outcomes. They'll complete that or try to, they will complete that by May 12. And then, as we move through the summer and early next fall, those same groups will be working on strategies. And then in August, when everyone comes back, you'll have an opportunity to see their work and again provide an opportunity to respond to that. So Holly.
Yes. Just wanted to let everyone know with respect to Dr. Welty's comments. We thank all of you for being here. This feedback is invaluable, and the committee, you know, will look over this and incorporate as much of it as we can in starting to finalize these documents. I know that there are a lot of our colleagues who are not here today because class, appointment, students, you know, are day-to-day jobs. So if, as you leave, you will think about sharing this information with your colleagues and encouraging them to review the materials that you had the opportunity to review here today. We have an online feedback form, and so this is the short link. It's also on the bottom of your agenda for today. If you click there, it will take you to the strategic planning website, and you will have a chance to provide feedback, looks like it's loading here, to provide feedback on the values, mission, vision, and then the priorities and goals. So please do take the opportunity to do this. If you're like me and you walk out of here and you have a great idea as you go back to your office, you know, please feel free to contribute as well. Thank you so much.
And then to wrap us up, I would just add the following. It was very fascinating and enlightening to hear your remarks because we had a lot of these same debates around the table. So we want you to know that that is, it will help us, I suppose, get into the deliberation as we get to the final steps. This is important. I agree with, I think Dr. Bush who made the comment, he's not in the room now, about polytechnic. Many of you did make the comment about polytechnic. We've had a lot of conversation about polytechnic, and it's very interesting that this word and this concept actually came to us from the community. And so we were back and forth in this dialogue from listening to people in the community about what does that mean for us as we think about our future. So we will have a lot more comprehensive dialogue around that, but we have really honed in, as you all know, on experiential learning and applied learning and applied research and, you know, a lot of the things that are happening in the university community today. And while we won't be announcing this for a few more weeks, we actually do have a major gift that will be coming into the institution for naming a Center for Experiential Learning and Civic Engagement, which will actually help us to catapult this concept of polytechnic forward. So I ask you to leave here thinking about the fact that we still will be in charge of creating that definition for ourselves, and as a new emerging university with tremendous faculty and very committed staff, we have the opportunity to define what that is. So this feedback helps us with all of those elements. We have talked a lot, and we heard it here, do we say Hispanic? Do we not say Hispanic? Is it inclusive? Is it exclusive? I will tell you, we've had this very rigorous conversation around the table, and we will achieve Hispanic-serving institution designation in 2018. We meet it now. We just don't have all of the federal requirements in terms of time that it will take. So we're going to continue to have this debate, and we have to ask ourselves, in our community with the population that we serve, do we feel comfortable in the community saying we are Hispanic-serving or we're not Hispanic-serving, even though we are by the students that we serve, to not mention it? Is this part of our birthplace and part of our birthright as an institution? So we're going to struggle with this conversation. There is not an easy answer. Everyone in this room that's on the strategic planning committee smiled and grinned and nodded your heads on every one of your comments because we've had them. There's not an easy answer, but we will continue that conversation to reach that answer. So I appreciate your time. We, the strategic planning committee, appreciate your effort, and I appreciate the leadership that we have in Holly and Leonard and all of the strategic planning committee to continue the conversation. Will be back in touch, please encourage your colleagues to check in on the strategic planning feedback form. I look forward to talking with you again soon. Thank you. Have a great afternoon and viva fiesta. See you Sunday at the event.